Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Duncanville meeting for the Duncanville community economic development corporation D C E D C director's board meeting at six oh one P M. We're gonna start if you don't keep my with me. Keep my mind down your head with indication. Do you have the power, Lord, we come to you as someone who's been on how? Lord, we thank you for this evening, Lord, but we thank you for day that was a promise to us. Lord, we ask you to bless our hearts and our minds. Let this meeting be done that's grateful in your sight, Lord. Let it be pleasing for you for what you should have us do for the community of Duncanville. We ask you to lead us and guide us in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
If y'all please stand for the pledges. Mr. Martin, please.
Okay, first the U S, United States pledge, our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and now the Texas pledge.
On to the Texas fire. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, you may be seated. Next on our agenda is the citizens public forum. To submit a comment via email for your comments to be read, the following information is required. Submit a comment by four P M. on Monday, April twenty second, twenty twenty four. Email jeremiah.brewer@duncanvilltexas.com. Email title, public comment, April twenty second, twenty twenty four. First and last name and your address. Jeremiah, do you have any public comments?
No.
Citizens public forum.
I am.
She says she signed, did she sign it?
I signed in.
Oh, email. Okay.
Public comment.
Okay. So.
Read the first leg.
You gotta read the first name, I don't know what it is. I do know what it is.
Patricia Ebert, address one one five six Greenstone, Texas.
Ms. Ebert?
Yes. Thank you. Yes, Patricia Ebert, one one five South Greenstone. Uh, what Mr. Keys is passing out is uh, the minutes from the February twenty sixth regular meeting. And it's for your quick reference because that's what my public comment is on. At your March twenty fifth meeting, your last meeting, the February twenty sixth minutes were approved. And when I opened record the minutes, what I discovered is from the copy that I received that there were two omissions in that February twenty sixth meeting minutes. One omission was uh, listing that the four thousand dollar sponsorship for the fire truck pool was not in the minutes. And the second was that the meeting that was called at the end of the February twenty sixth regular meeting to be scheduled for February the twenty ninth at eight A M. to discuss two hundred West Center was not in the minutes also. So that's for your consideration. Whole another topic, I strongly support that an independent delivery service deliver your meals for your meeting and not use a staff member to do the delivery.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We appreciate you very much. I guess looking to the inverse of that why those weren't, those were part of our meeting.
Correct. Were they approved by the board?
Yeah, well, I wasn't here next year. I didn't make the meeting last month. I have, I have a family situation.
The fire truck pool was approved by the board and then the meeting, the subsequent meeting that you mentioned was scheduled.
And we did have that.
And we had.
We did have that meeting.
But they are not reflected in the minutes?
This is what you downloaded from the website.
I've opened records to it and it was sent to me by Karyn Smith.
Okay, give us the opportunity, look at that.
Yeah, I opened records, just FYI, I opened records of the whole meeting packet, which I read and that this is what caught my eye because the March twenty fifth video that's on the city website does have the minutes being approved.
Okay. We'll look at that nickel first. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, any other, any other citizens comments?
I just signed in, of course, I didn't know that was.
Okay, so you're actually, you're actually, you have an item on your agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So let's just plumming their, their items on your.
Yeah, their items on your agenda as well. Okay. Hearing that, hearing that, yeah? Hearing them, any other, item number two, uh, receive director's report on the tab number two. Jeremiah? Okay.
If you don't have one, I'll buy a staff.
Item number three, briefings, uh, briefings and presentations. A Hilton Garden Inn Duncanville Dunkinville hot tax application through the presentation presented by Angela Owens, city events planner for the city.
Hi, y'all. Told you you're already good at seeing me.
That question. It's not there?
Are they back from this?
Oh, it's on. It should be for item six. It's on item eight.
Eight?
Eight. There we go, okay.
So this is a pretty straightforward application. It is from Hilton, um, they're asking for seventeen thousand dollars, uh, focusing on marketing, bringing in, uh, they're going to do a national campaign to bring in convention, bringing large groups, they're advertising their pool rooms, their meeting rooms. Uh, some of the things that they wanna buy is like swag, like cups and pens and things like that that you get when you have a big group that's coming, like a welcome package. Um, they also wanna spend some of it for advertising whenever you go to a trade show, um, when you're convincing people, hey, come, stay with us. Uh, you can give them pamphlets, it tells about hotel options, the city, uh, opportunities. Um, estimated they'll reach over a hundred thousand people with this campaigns. Uh, and these are just their uses, uh, what they're focusing on their marketing. And I also have a representative here, if you have any questions for them directly.
I got that, it's a very straightforward. Do you think the hotel wants to add to it?
So particularly, we're looking at doing a show this summer in San Antonio that is geared towards meeting planners, uh, looking that they're, um, hire bulk meeting planners, um, for corporate meeting and larger group meetings, which would bring in, uh, both conference space and sleeping rooms, not just to our hotel, but we also use the Hampton, it's ours, which is not, but we love them. Uh, so it is bringing a lot of additional tax money through the occupancy tax as well as sales tax through our conference center. And of course, additionally, we always encourage local business spend through the restaurants and shopping opportunities that Duncanville, uh, provides. And we always encourage that, that that shop and local spend is shopped here first, so. Um, additionally, with any of the branded items, uh, we were going to, uh, if y'all allow us, uh, use the E D C and Duncanville logos so that it's cross branded for not just the hotel, but for the hotel in partnership with the city, so that we are showing our partnership is strong.
So that branding will be on all, on all items?
Yes, sir.
And that'll go through Alex's, uh, the communications office to ensure that everything is correct. Any other questions I can help with?
We have your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Carrie Cook, I'm the director of sales at the hotel. And the hotel's address is eight hundred North Main Street, Duncanville, seven five one one six.
Another question.
Yes, sir.
Um, it didn't have an X in here, I assumed it's item C advertising, is that the only item you're making the request for?
Yes, sir. The reason it doesn't have an example is that we haven't, they have not hired designer yet.
No, they didn't X, which request.
So one X, that doesn't work in the P E F one.
Any other questions for the board? Item number four, consider approval of the D C E D C minutes for the special meeting held on February twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. Is that on the tab four, Jeremiah? Greg and Tanya, once you review it, if you don't have any questions, I'm telling you motion to approve while I'm doing this. Who's gonna be up standing?
Is this for the special car?
Uh huh.
Yeah, I'll rather be up saying, yeah.
The minutes from the special meeting held on February twenty ninth, twenty twenty four.
So. It's been moved and properly seconded in regards to approval of the minutes from the special car meeting on February twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. Any questions, comments or observations? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Any upstanding? Item number five, consider approval of the D C E D C limits for the regularly scheduled hotel meeting on March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four on tab five.
Given that we approved the, the regular hotel meeting held on March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
Do I have a second? It's been moved and properly seconded in regards to approval of the board meeting, regularly scheduled board meeting minutes. Any other questions, comments or observations? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Item number six, receive and discuss the following reports. A, D C E D C monthly budget report for March twenty twenty four. B, city sales and use tax comparison summaries for March twenty twenty four. C, Duncanville Fieldhouse Sports Facility Financial Status Reports for March twenty twenty four. And D, Main Street Duncanville Limited Partnership Monthly Financials for March twenty twenty four. Jeremiah, are you doing that one or?
From what I can tell. So we're still aligned with our sister cities. And taking care of the monthly and then our comparable payments as prior year.
Work by nine percent.
Not a dis report. It's not a dis report.
Sorry, Jeremiah, could you repeat what you said?
I'm trying to hear you. I'm sorry, there's a additional report, it's not currently on the agenda, but it's probably a report, maybe the D C E C's ready here in the future, since we'll be in terms of five funds, so it's not a dis report going forward. The D C E C's pretty. Be careful, yeah. That's it, yes.
Any questions, comments or observations? Do we need more time?
Still no time, I'll put on.
Do you have to give any questions? Item seven, conduct a public hearing from the following items. A, item eight of the April twenty second, twenty twenty four D C E D C agenda, Hilton Garden Inn Duncanville. Have a motion to open up, open the public hearing?
I'm gonna say we open for public hearing.
Right, for seconds, sir. It's been moved and properly seconded in regards to opening up the public hearing for item number eight. Any other questions, comments or observations? All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Any other comments in regards to the, uh, application made for the Hilton Garden Inn to Duncanville? Hearing none?
That's in the board.
I'll also, I'll open it up publicly, publicly, but I have anything else to say. Anybody for or against? Hearing none? Um, entertain a motion to close the public hearing on item number A.
Motion.
Nice, a second.
It's been moved and properly seconded in closing of the, uh, public hearing for item number A, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Conduct a public hearing on the following, item nine, of the April twenty second, twenty twenty four D C E D C agenda, one source plumbing. Uh, entertain a motion to open up public hearing?
So.
It's been moved and properly seconded in regards to opening up the hearing on item number nine, one source plumbing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Is anyone here to speak pro for or against the, the, the one source plumbing? You would please stand, give us your name and address.
Patrick Figaro, I'm the owner, president of One Source Plumbing and Air. Uh, we also do grease and we're, our location's at five one eight East Highway sixty seven, right up the street of, uh, it's Daniel Dale?
Right.
Yeah, Daniel Dale. Came a couple of months ago, I think two months ago. We're still doing work with you guys, we just finished up the fire station, Main Street, all over service, but you know, we still get a lot of work with all your other coworkers throughout the city. Any questions?
You said you also do grease, what do you mean by that?
Yeah, we remove grease from grease traps.
Okay.
Commercial kitchen applications.
I got questions. Is your building, you have framing, uh, when I, when I take the service road?
And I brought my contractor this time, he's the one that's putting the puzzle together for us.
I have a question, the signage grant is, if I'm reading it correctly, it's twenty five thousand and some change and seventy eight thousand?
Yeah, I think it was like over, almost a hundred thousand just for the sign.
Is that two different parts, two different signs?
It's one sign, double sided, maybe. Which, which has attained the permit, I think, one to expose.
Maybe you, I don't know if you answered this before, what's your total investment in this method?
Uh, we started at about one point three, but with materials and changes, it's probably gonna end up about one point four. Close to that.
Plus what?
I'm saying plus to that, cause for instance, we found a new better material for the front of the building that. Trex, it's a, I guess you can explain what kind of material that is versus us just using regular boards that'll rot out over months.
Now he's using, instead of going with some wood material, sorry.
I'm sorry, you would, your name and address for this?
My name's Antonio Otello, uh, I'm here with a contractor for One Source Plumbing. Uh, my address, the address of the project is five one eight, six, uh, Highway sixty seven. I was just gonna comment on his material list, um, that he's referencing is a Trex material, which is a composite material, uh, plastic, kinda like a PVC type composite, uh, which is a more what, has more of a warranty on weatherproofing, uh, supposedly have like a fifty year warranty, uh, shelf, shelf life of.
Yeah, which will be more bearable and just look better for a way longer period than, you know, three, four months like a wooden fence that you'd have to replace in three, four years.
And that's on the building?
Yes, that's the whole front face, the things that's thirty foot tall.
It'd be the accent, uh, accent point standing in the, at the front, the curb appeal.
And no matter what, no matter what you do here, you still find the permits except for the city to be co- co-possessed by the city.
Permits already, and, and, uh, we already have the permits, we're already building, we're in the midst of construction.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to speak, uh, for or against, uh, this application? Hearing none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing for One Source Plumbing.
Motion to close.
I have a second.
Right.
It's been moved and properly seconded in regards to closing of the public hearing for One Source Plumbing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Conduct public hearing on, on C, item number ten of the April twenty second, twenty twenty four C, C, D C E D C agenda, Sharon's Loving Home Healthcare. Uh, entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing for item two. I'm sorry, item ten.
It is C ten, yes. Do I have a second? It's been moved and properly seconded, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Anyone here who'd like to speak for or against, um, item number ten, Sharon's Loving Home Care? If you would please, if you would, give us your name and your address.
My name is Shakita Harris, fourth and sixth apartment.
So you're speaking for or against?
For. I used to be in front of a lot of people.
Not a problem, you're, you're among friends, I promise, take your time, take your time.
So, um, I have a home health agency, I'm from St. Louis, Missouri, I have one in Missouri, I've had for seven years. I'm new to Dallas, Texas, I've been here about maybe four years, but I've been in the Denny area. I was introduced to Duncanville by Mrs. Jennifer Lott. And she is the one requesting me here today, I was having some problems, I just recently lost both of my parents. And I was having some problems and I was giving up, I was honestly giving up and I, I am a child of God, so I continue to talk to God and that's why I'm standing here today. She believed in me and she kept pushing me and saying, don't stop. And I was like, well, I don't, I can't get a sign up, I don't, I don't, I'm not from here, I don't know what I'm gonna do, I don't, I don't know anybody in this town. And she was like, well, I'm gonna send you to the city of Duncanville where they help everybody, they, they love their community, so. She, she's, right now I'm looking for me a house in Duncanville so I can get out of Denny because I'm driving an hour every day.
If you come on the right night, we have plenty of, we'll say agents, we'll say agents that come to these meetings as well.
So you have a question for us? Do you have an office operating in Denton right now, so this would be another office?
No, this, I closed my office down in Denny, it was too much traffic on three eighty. And I go to church right across the street at Gray City, that's my family's church, and that's how I got in contact with Miss Jennifer Lott, so I was riding past after church and see her sign, and I've been in the building since November.
So you wanna relocate your business from there to here?
Yes, it, it's, yes, yes.
Sounds like she's already relocated.
I've been here since November.
You've already relocated?
Yes.
And how many people are employed at this location?
Right now, there's nobody in office but two of us. It's a home health agency, so most of them go out in the field to people's homes.
How many are those?
Uh, about fifteen.
Part-time?
Part-time.
And the two in the office, are they full-time part-time?
One is me and the other one, she's part-time.
So one of them?
Yes.
I just confirmed it, just cause I think the amount is in the wrong line, it's assigned as not for facade, for six thousand four hundred seventy-three.
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you.
X is right with that.
The X is right.
I thought, okay. Oh, it is, okay. Okay. Thank you, anything else? Board and more, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else has any comments for or against this, this application? Entertain a motion to close public hearing? Okay, it's been, it's been moved and properly, I have a second. It's been moved and properly seconded in regards to the closing of the public hearing for Sharon's Loving Home Healthcare. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The public hearing, uh, the public hearings for item D, item number eleven, of the April twenty second, twenty twenty four D C E D C agenda, Advanced Alliance Incorporated, doing business as advanced healthcare, do I have a motion to open up the public hearing? Remove, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded in regards to opening up the public hearings for Advanced Alliance Incorporated, doing business as advanced healthcare. All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Is anyone here to speak for or against this item?
Yes, I will.
If you don't mind, please, here, you can give us your name and address for the record, please.
My, excuse me, my name is Dwayne Vaughn, uh, address one twenty-five West Wheaton Road, retired Navy, so. Yeah, same thing too. We're here for the, uh, system grant with the facade of the exterior of the building. We're here for the assistance grant with the, uh, facade of the exterior of the building. Um. What we're trying to do is prevent, to provide a building that's, uh, more modern looking, more tasteful for the area, for the Duncanville area. Uh, the building now is, is horrible, uh, the brickings, we was gonna, at first, our initial plan was, was, uh. Like power washing, painted, uh, new roof and things like that, we decided to go and do, uh, stucco. On the outside to give it a modern look, the lighting and, uh, so forth, I brought my contractor here who has. A whole visual on the things that we doing on the outside, also, we had provided, uh, some pictures of what it looks like now. And, uh, so therefore, we also did an example of what we trying to make it look like. Where we trying to give that look, that appealing look that when you drive through Duncanville, this is what, you know, that is a more modern. Appealing, tasteful building. We also hired majority of, well, a lot of our people are Duncanville, uh, employees of Duncanville residents. We've been doing business for, in the Duncanville area for nineteen years now. And we've been renting the whole track.
So do you, on this, do this building now or?
Yes.
Since jobs created, there's a rental option, what is that?
We're, we're gonna have some suites that'll be available for renting.
Okay.
As well.
Question, this for the board, did we approve a paving grant for this property?
Yes.
Last year?
Last year. That's about two years ago, we've been, uh, so, that's the, that's one of the issues, we, this has been an ongoing thing for over two years.
This is already framed down for, for the pool, right?
Yes, we started, yeah. Yeah, so, this, we've been having problems, like I said, for over two years now. And so now we are up and running, and of course, since then, when we initially came, everything has tripled, as far as prices.
That's right.
So this is sixty, maybe this was strive, this sixty-four thousand for concrete, does this represent what we've already approved?
It's just, it's an additional struggle.
The current, one that's in the packet, that was the previous application, the current one is in there. For an end of year, it should be forty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-five.
We didn't ask for additional concrete.
Yeah, it's just, this is just for the.
Okay, yeah, we didn't.
Oh, so, so we already did this one, yeah, so you just asking for the.
Like facade.
The five thousand?
It's a forty-four.
That's another one that's shifted, the X is correct, but the amount's a different. So it's not a pavement grant, it's a facade.
No, ma'am, it's not a pavement.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So you, you've got, how many suites are you proposing for in there?
How many we have for, uh, right?
Three. Through, so. I would imagine that doing exterior work would help your leasing?
Yes.
And do you have any one, so you're gonna take one and leave two to lease? Or is it?
No.
One plus three one?
Wait, no, uh, the way the building is.
The structure has, uh, uh, six rooms, so there're gonna be offices for the main business and then the back rooms are gonna be three additional offices, it's gonna be up and around.
So I'm saying you got one main?
Yes, sir, one main and then three, yes, sir.
They could lease out.
Yes, sir.
So it'd be potentially four businesses operating under one.
Yes, sir.
What other type of business are we gonna be looking at going next?
Uh, it depends who rents for those rooms, it could be tax, it could be, you know.
We didn't put a skill.
We didn't put a skill on it, so.
Yes, it's for it.
We just offering the space.
We don't offer the suites.
Right, so office, yes, office.
I was trying to see, that, I guess that that was my question, if it was gonna be like a, a tax service, an accounting service, or if it was gonna be like a dentist store or a doctor's office?
It could be, yeah, whatever they wanna rent it for, I'm assuming, you know, I don't know.
What's the square footage of the individual?
Each, each, each office.
Hmm.
Uh, the smallest I have there is, uh.
Of the three that you're gonna write in off, though?
No, I'm talking about the three that I wanna rent, yeah, the average is, uh, eight by ten. Approximate.
Thank you. Are you a science student?
Yes, I am. Yeah, boy, it's big.
Any other questions, comments, or observations? Entertaining motion to close the public hearing? It's been moved and properly second in regards to closing of the public hearing for Advanced, Advanced Alliance. Alliance Incorporated doing business as Advanced Healthcare, all in favor say aye. I'll oppose same side. Public hearing, entertaining, uh, item number C E, item twelve of the April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four D C E D C agenda. Sunflower Dental, entertaining motion to open up, open public hearing?
Open public hearing?
I have a second. It's been moved and properly second in regards to open up the public hearing for, uh, item twelve, Sunflower Dental, all in favor say aye. I'll oppose same side. Anyone here to speak for or against the application for Sunflower Dental? Hearing none, entertaining motion to close the public hearing?
Quick question, and this is on staff, just to confirm, I don't know what happened with the bachelor applications this time, but business retention and expansion is what they're asking for for seventeen five. Not a paint grant specifically, but, and then demo. Three hundred K, not infrastructure, but three hundred K.
Yeah, it's demo, but it's, I've got it broken down. Most of what they're asking for is interior improvements, but there are, uh, inside, I think it's.
I think what she's getting at is that on the application. If you noticed, they put an X next to demo, the amount they're requesting should go right out on the side. But it seems like on these applications, they're putting it on the next line.
I think there's one, I think there was, they made it, they just made a mistake. They just put like, some amount, I'm not sure if that was, I was looking at all these, since they had the same problem, I don't know if it's.
But you're saying you have presentation that.
You have presentation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we pause.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
It's been moved and properly second in regards to closing of the public hearing, all in favor say aye, I'll oppose same side. Item number eight, discuss and consider possible actions regarding an application for hot, for hot funding for Hilton Garden Inn, Duncanville, Duncanville, located at eight hundred North Main Street. Duncanville, Texas, seven five one one six, what is the pleasure of the board?
I move that we table item eight for executive session.
It's been moved and properly second in regards to table item eight, you want to begin session, any other questions, comments, or observations? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. I'll oppose same side. Item number nine, discuss and consider possible actions regarding an application for incentive and grant assistance by One Source Plumbing. Located at five one eight Highway sixty-seven, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one three seven, what is the pleasure of the board?
I move that we table item number nine to executive session.
Do I have a second? It's been moved and properly second in regards to moving, uh, tabling item number nine to executive se- into executive session, any other questions, comments, or observations? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, I'll oppose same side. Item number ten, discuss and consider possible actions regarding an application for incentive and grant assistance by Sharon's Loving Home Healthcare. Located at four three six North Main Street, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one one six, and what is the pleasure of the board?
I also move that we table item number ten into executive session.
It's been moved and properly second in regards to tabling item number ten to executive session, any other questions, comments, or observations? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. I'll oppose same side. Item number eleven, discuss and consider possible actions regarding an application for incentive and grant assistance by Advanced Alliance Incorporated. Doing business as Advanced Healthcare located at one 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 West Daniel Dale Road, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one three seven, what is the pleasure of the board?
I move that we table item eleven into executive session.
It's been moved and properly seconded in regards to tabling item number eleven into executive session, uh, all in, all in favor say aye. I'll oppose same side. Item number twelve, discuss and consider possible actions regarding application for incentive and grant assistance by Sunflower Dental. Located at two zero two West Center, West Center Street, Suite E F N P F G, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one one six. And what is the pleasure of the board?
I move that we table item number twelve into executive session.
Do I have a second? It's been moved and properly second in regards to tabling item number twelve into executive session, all in favor say aye. I'll, I'll, I'll oppose same side. Item number thirteen, executive session, in accordance with the Texas Government Code, the D C E D C, shall convene into a closed executive session pursuant to the following section. Section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with city attorney or special counsel regarding pending or concentrated litigation, no items. In addition, in, in accordance with the Texas Code, Governmental Code, the D C E D C shall convene into closed executive session. All right, it's, um, entertaining motion to come out of the executive session?
Make motion to come out of the executive session at eight ten?
I second.
It's been moved and properly second in regards to coming out of the executive session at eighteen P M. Any, any questions, comments, or observations? All in favor say aye. I'll oppose same side. Thank you very much, any? Any necessary, any necessary or appropriate action that is a result of, that they were taking a closed executive session, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for, um, let's see here. Item number eight, this, uh, consideration for, um, hot funding for the Hilton Garden Inn at eight hundred North Main Street. For the, um, seventeen thousand dollars for this calendar year for marketing material.
I second.
It's been moved and properly second in regards to approval of the seventeen thousand dollar grant to the Hilton Garden Inn, Duncanville, any questions, comments, or observations? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. I'll oppose same side. Anything else?
I move, Mr. President, uh, that we approve an incentive and grant assistant, approve these, our incentive and grant assistance application. For One Source Plumbing located at five eighteen Highway sixty-seven, um, Duncanville, seven five one three seven, in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Specific to sign landscape and asphalt grant, or pavement grant, sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any questions, comments, or obs- or observations? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same side. Anything else?
I will make a motion that we table item number ten. Regarding Sharon's Loving Home Healthcare located at four three six North Main Street, to allow for staff to obtain additional information from the developer regarding, uh, this proposed site.
I don't think that's what we just.
Right.
Nope.
We approved that one.
You approved it for, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at the wrong, adding my apology. But item. So, okay, Sharon's Loving is a signage grant, I make a motion that we approve. Item number ten, Sharon's Loving Home Healthcare, or signage grant, in the amount of, it's four thousand.
Six thousand.
Six thousand four hundred. Four hundred and seven, three dollars, thirty-five cents.
A second.
It's been moved and properly second in regards to approval of the signage grant for Sharon's Loving Home Healthcare, any other questions, comments, or observations? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. I'll oppose same side.
Mr. President, I move that we, um, table the application for the incentive and grant assistance by Advanced Alliance Inc. Doing business as Advanced Healthcare located at one eleven West Daniel Dale Road, until staff can conduct additional follow-up with the applicant.
Do I have a second? It's been moved and properly second in regards to tabling of the Advanced Alliance Incorporated doing business as Advanced Healthcare. Uh, instructing staff to actually get more information in regards to the, to the application, any other questions, comments, or observations? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. I'll oppose same side. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we table item number twelve of the current agenda, this is, we need to Sunflower Dental located at two zero two West Center Street. Suite E F G, to allow staff additional time to obtain information from the meeting of the developer.
I second.
It's been moved and properly second in regards to tabling of the Sunflower, Sunflower Dental, any other questions, comments, or observations? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. I'll oppose same side. And, I think that's all the items we took up in, in executive session, uh, so motion for adjournment?
Motion for adjournment.
Do I have a, all in favor say aye. I'll oppose same side. Our meeting is adjourned at eight sixteen P M, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Even our short meeting. Even our short meetings. Cause we're like, this is gonna be a short meeting.